We'll come to order. It's nine o'clock. Ann, if I could have you recall, roll please.
Fisher Snyder.
Here.
Bone. Twilliger.
Here.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Chairman Glazer.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
All right. Mr. Twilliger, if you would lead us in the opening and the pledge.
Father in heaven, bless us as we gather today for this meeting. Guide our minds and hearts so that we will work for the good of our community. Teach us to be generous in our outlook and courteous in face of difficulty and wise in all of our decisions. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have a lot going on here. Item number four, approval of minutes for the March 19th, April 9th, and April 16th meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Support.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any questions, comments, corrections on the minutes? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call?
Yep.
This time, okay. Minutes accepted. Acceptance of the claims and bills. Ann, if you would take us through that.
General bank claims for the weeks of 4-1 through 4-5, $609,889.83. With total general fund expenditures, $116,546.10. General bank claims for the weeks of 4-8 through 4-12, $1,297,639.83. With total general fund expenditures, $169,955.22. General bank claims for the weeks of 4-15 through 4-19, $878,612.31. With total general fund expenditures, $48,670.90.
All right. Here, could I have a motion from you?
Motion to pay the bills.
Accepted to pay the bills, okay.
Forward.
So we have a motion and a support to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If you oppose, say nay. Motion carries. All right, we have a special program of the day. All the people here are wonderful opportunity for the employee appreciation awards. We will make the awards and then following that, we will adjourn our meeting for about 20 minutes. And then we'll come back following that, okay? All right, so I guess we turn it over.
Turn it over to Jessica.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
On behalf of the Midland County Employee Appreciation Committee and the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to welcome you to the Spring 2024 Employee Appreciation Award Ceremony. The employee appreciation program was established in 1991 to recognize employees who go beyond their normal job duties. Along with my fellow committee members, I have the distinct honor of introducing you to some of the incredible employees here in Midland County. For those of you who are receiving awards, please stick around until the end of the ceremony, if you can, for a group photo right outside in the lobby. And after we've read each nomination aloud, please come forward to receive your award. We're going to kick it off with Detective Brent Benzing from the Sheriff's Department. Brent devoted hundreds of hours, including his own free time, to solving a sexual assault case from 1996. He explored newly discovered DNA testing methods, including a recently introduced term in law enforcement, genetic genealogy. With assistance from a local foundation and support from Midland County Sheriff's Office Administration, this case was officially reopened in 2020. He brought peace to the victim who had struggled with this incident for nearly 30 years when the suspect was finally identified. Recently, Douglas Weber pled guilty to assaulting the victim from this case. The county of Midland is fortunate to have Detective Brent Benzing as an employee. He prefers to stay out of the spotlight and just do his work, however, cases like this deserve to be recognized. Great work, detective. Next up, we have Kelly Bauer from the Health Department. Kelly is an amazing coworker and fun to be around. The help she provides translating for our Spanish-speaking clients is second to none. She has her own workload that keeps her busy but is always available when needed. Sometimes taking on extra work can be time-consuming, but Kelly always has a smile on her face and takes her time with everyone. We can't thank you enough, Kelly, and we're so happy you're a part of our team. Next up, we have Denise Mason from the Finance Department. And I am going to quote the next submission word for word because I couldn't have said it any better than this person did, so I'm going to do my best to give this justice. On a cold, blistering Friday afternoon in March, an external Midland County Support Department was in need of help. An elderly veteran was going to spend a cold, snowy night in their vehicle that no longer ran. A quick solution was made, and Denise stood ready to execute that plan. Unfortunately, Denise fell ill and went to the hospital. Under immense agony and keeping the Grim Reaper away, she continued to execute that plan. As a nurse was administering an IV, a doctor finally ordered her to stop her mission. Her courage and can-do attitude was infectious and ended up providing a homeless veteran with sanctuary. Denise Mason's deeds on that blistering Friday afternoon were exemplary and should be forever recognized in Midland County lore. Denise, you are a rock star, and Midland County is incredibly grateful for all that Next up is Jenna Legner from the Circuit Court. Jenna has gone above and beyond in taking over such an important role in Circuit Court. Between the unpredictability of the court calendar, the responsibility of ushering attorneys in and out of judge chambers in the courtroom, and the nearly constant ringing of her phone, Jenna maintains a collected and organized demeanor despite how chaotic her position is. She goes out of her way to not only ensure the court's day runs smoothly, but she's also incredibly helpful and present for Judge Karas, her coworkers, and attorneys visiting the courthouse. Moreover, Jenna is always willing to lend a hand when work-related issues arise. Jenna should be recognized for how much work she puts in to make sure everyone else's day goes well and that it would not be the same without her there. Next up is Jason Haruska from the County Jail. According to the next nominator, I could write a thousand words explaining how Deputy Haruska performs the greatest cell searches, keeps the peace, among other responsibilities. What really stands out about Jason is what he brings to the shift. Everyone on shift with Jason goes home in a better mood. He's above and beyond helpful to his coworkers, both in assisting in their duties and lifting their spirits. Boosting morale might seem like a small thing to discuss, but if we had more Jasons, coming to work would be a piece of cake. Vegetarian cake, of course. Jason is a great deputy, but an even better man. He's nominated for the example he sets and for making the jail a better place every day. We appreciate you, Jason.
You're here.
Supposed to turn it over to someone else, but she's not here, so I'm going to keep going off the cuff. Next up, we've got Sherry Miller from the Courthouse Security. Sherry's a very hard worker. She has great customer service skills. She maintains a professional demeanor when dealing with inmates and arrestees. She also does a great job multitasking when situations arise that necessitate security within the courthouse. Sherry is very dependable and can be counted on when needed. Next up is Jason Stenka, also from Courthouse Security. Jason's a very hard worker. He has great customer service skills and maintains a professional demeanor when dealing with inmates and arrestees in the courthouse. He also does a great job multitasking when situations arise and can be counted on when tasks need completed. He does not complain and maintains high standards for himself. Thank you for all you do, Jason.
Come on, Miss Lee. Let me take over.
Oh, okay. Second.
Yeah. Jessica, Jessica Tucker. Jessica is a wonderful team member. She's a pleasure to work with and always willing to lend assistance. Jessica has a positive attitude and exceeds expectations in a fast-paced and demanding environment. She is truly professional and treats all who enter the court with utmost respect and promptly assists them with their needs. She is effective at multitasking and a truly pleasure to work with. Great job. Great work, Jessica. Is that correct, Leah? Leah began as a field technician and interned as a biology assistant. She is a great asset to the team and always seeks ways to help. It is truly a pleasure to work with someone so intelligent, kind, and helpful. Your efforts are greatly appreciated, Leah. Is that correct? Katie has only been with the county for about a year, but has already developed a strong working relationship with the Emergency Management Office. Katie has been a great partner and support in identifying needs to help to prioritize them and even with barriers in the way. Katie has been instrumental in building monumentum behind getting projects started and off the ground. One of these projects is a shelter-in-place awareness campaign that is being created to increase public education of the potential of hazardous material releases in our community. For all you do, Katie, thank you. Next, we have Bruce Lee Hernandez. The following excerpt is from Bruce's nominator. My dad has tried to get services through the VA Hospital in the past and ran into challenges. Bruce helped me fill out paperwork and submit it. Thanks to Bruce, not only is the VA covering the cost of my dad's hearing aids, but also all of his medical care, and he now receives a monthly disability payment we never knew he was eligible for. Bruce not only helped us with what we asked, but also helped us with things we didn't know to ask. My office is down the hall from Bruce's office, and I see and hear him continuously helping other veterans and families the same way he did mine. His level of patience and understanding with people who are sometimes frustrated, mourning, or confused is quite impressive. He is skilled at helping people and is an asset to Midland County. Thank you for providing such wonderful service and care to Midland County's veterans. Thank you, Bruce. Sidekick there. Next up, we have Deanna Seaman. Deanna is a registered nurse at the Maternal Infant Health Program, where she goes in homes serving high-risk pregnant women and infants. In addition to Deanna's day-to-day responsibilities, she is also a breastfeeding counselor, a certified car seat technician, and provides infant safe sleep education in the community. She has been an active member of Safe and Sound's Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Committee for the past four years, focusing on parenting education early in life, which is one of the most important strategies to prevent child abuse and neglect. She goes to all Head Start programs to screen children for high lead levels. If you see Deanna in the parking lot hauling a car seat to be installed properly or a pack-and-play for an infant to sleep safely, tell her how much you appreciate everything she does for our Midland County families. Michaela Carruthers. Michaela works at Pinecrest Farms, where she demonstrates dedication, compassion, and willingness to help in any way she can. She approaches each day with a positive attitude and willingness to take challenges head-on. Michaela consistently goes the extra mile to make a difference in the lives of our residents, whether it's emotional support or assisting with personalized care needs. We appreciate you, Michaela, and for all you do for the residents at Pinecrest. Shelley Kruski. Hope I print. Shelley works at our Health Department in the area that specializes in immunizations. She is dependable and hardworking. She is so kind to all of our clients and a fun team member. She is upbeat and motivational to everyone. When you need anything, she steps in to help. She is always making others laugh or smile. Thank you, Shelley, for all you do. Laura Wright. Laura works as the front desk clerk in our Health Department. She is quick to help with anything needed and is friendly and thorough. Laura is helpful with organizing the mickers for the day's appointments, as well as troubleshooting and merging information. She always helps and keeps a smile on her face. Brandon Akins. Corporal Akins from the Midland County Jail stepped up and filled in as sergeant when requested from our jail administration. He also served as his nominator's field training officer when they were hired as new deputies. Recently, there was an issue at the jail with the technology system which controls our doors, lighting, and other factors from the security of the jail. Corporal Akins remained calm and took action to correct the situation. He was able to think quickly to ensure the security of his deputies and ensure the facility was not compromised. He makes a huge impact on inmates struggling with their mental health. He communicates well and follows through with support staff to keep the jail residents safe. Corporal Akins, your swift thinking and dedicated service have not gone unnoticed. Wade Lamblyn. Wade was instrumental in ensuring the courthouse furniture installation was handled timely, appropriately, and as efficiently as was possible. He frequently stayed late and came in early, including a weekend for District Court. Not sure if the other offices needed that as well. He acted as a liaison for issues regarding setup with the contractor, and there were many. He provided ingenuity in solving any problems that arose. Again, there were many. Wade took every challenge in stride and successfully navigated every issue that confronted him. He is still the driver's seat of this adventure, ensuring that all employees of the courthouse are comfortable in their new settings. The courthouse is grateful for his incredibly hard work and positive attitude throughout the project. The county of Midland is lucky to have him. Thank you, Wade. Holly Barth is a registered nurse in the Maternal Infant Health Program, which is a home visiting program serving high-risk pregnant women and infants. Holly is very patient and nonjudgmental when assisting these families. Beyond Holly's day-to-day duties, which include helping pregnant moms without transportation or infants who are not gaining weight, you may see her here in the Board of Commissioners' room organizing the county blood drive. For the past 18 years, Holly has been the chairperson for our countywide baby shower and recently the Breastfeeding Coalition. You may see Holly at the various events educating families about maternal-child health resources. Holly is a true team player. She jumps into assist in any way she can. If you see Holly in the parking lot running to a home visit with a baby scale, diapers, and possibly a student in tow, you may want to say thanks for everything she does for Becky is a very knowledgeable and experienced public health nurse. She began her public health career with Midland County in 2012. She is well-versed in guidelines, public health recommendations, investigation, treatment, and preventative measures. She consistently goes above and beyond serving patients, meeting their needs to ensure the best possible Medicare, medical care. She recently coordinated a specialist evaluation for a traveler with a special need and then went to the specialist office to ensure a specific travel vaccine could safely be administered. She often comes in to clinic outside usual hours to meet the needs of her patients. Becky works hard to meet patients where they are at to reduce health risks, ensure proper treatment, and keep people safe. In addition, Becky is cross-trained and helps out without hesitation when public health is short-staffed. She has covered on short notice on days when she is not scheduled to work and for extended absences. Becky also strives to expand her knowledge base and attends conferences when possible, many on her day off. As if that isn't enough, Becky is funny and fun to work with. I'm not sure she knows just how special she really is, so we are telling her. Thanks for all you do. Anne Mahaffey. In December of 2022, a property owner came in to thank Anne for helping her. She was so grateful for Anne's assistance that she came back to the office, spoke to another employee, and was in tears explaining how grateful she is for Anne's help. Another taxpayer at risk for losing his house, Anne assisted by getting in touch with social services. She physically went to his house with the township treasurer to get signatures for his documents because he did not have transportation. This year, the same gentleman was at risk for losing his house again. With a week left before foreclosure, it was found that he was hospitalized and needed help. Extensive communication led to working with an assisted living facility, DHHS, the township assessor, and a local nonprofit to hopefully get this man back on his feet. These are things, these things are typically not what someone would think that staff from the treasurer's office does, but they do it daily. However, in many cases, Anne goes above and beyond for those that may not have the means to do it on their own. In addition, last January, a key employee left our office. Without that individual and without a finance director, we were in a position to quickly learn what needed to be done to complete year-end work and the upcoming audit. Anne took on the responsibility of cash reconciliations and daily financial receipts. She spent hours automating the process so it could be completed through the BSNA system rather than through a spreadsheet. She was able to get the daily processes more efficient, cash reconciliations completed directly within the software, and banking processes more in line with how we should be using accounts. Without her dedication to working so diligently on learning what needed to be done to complete everything for year-end and the audit, we would not be where we are today. We now have two additional staff members who can serve as backups, are more efficient and more confident than ever with this year's audit and year-end. The county is so lucky to have such a dedicated employee on staff. Kim Oswald. Kim remains calm and professional in every situation. She goes above and beyond to support local unit treasurers with kindness and patience, aiding them with anything from troubleshooting IT problems to educating them with best practices. I have personally listened to multiple phone calls where Kim is assisting the treasurers step-by-step on how to navigate through our software, whether it's reports needed or settings changed. Not only does she take the time to give direction, she will explain the why and the how, beyond her guidance. In 2023, there were a handful of new local treasurers that Kim fully dedicated her time and knowledge to making sure they were stepping into their new role with confidence. I believe that by Kim bringing the new treasurers into our office to assist them, they received the education needed and not provided anywhere else. By providing such services, Kim ensures property taxes are collected timely and accurately. From personal obstacles to professional ones, Kim never complains and she always shows up. We could nominate her on her merit alone, and she would be worthy. This concludes today's program. Please join me in the conference room next door for refreshments and to congratulate all the award recipients. For those of you who received awards, please don't forget to gather in the atrium for a group photo.
Okay, we're going to recess for 20 minutes?
Exactly. I am the Republican that ran last election cycle, and I came in just a little bit short against Dan Kilby. But Dan has announced that he is not seeking reelection, so I've thrown my hat back in the ring, and I hope that I might be able to earn support, not just here in Midland County, but throughout the 8th district. And as I would have said to especially the elected officials in the room, that many of whom I know, I will look forward to giving you even better, should I be successful, I know that our community and its elected officials need to have a strong voice in Washington. And as I say, should I be successful in this election, I will work hard to be that voice for you. So, thank you for the opportunity to say hello this morning, and good to see everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on to standing committee reports. Committee report number one.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee, have reviewed the amendment to the 2023-24 Comprehensive Agreement with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. The term of this agreement is from October 1, 2023, to September 30, 2024. This amendment includes an additional $59,747 for various program allocations. We recommend approval of the amendment to the grant and that the administrative controller be authorized to make the necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, Chairperson; James Geisler, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee; Steve Glazer, Chairperson; Eric Dorian, James Geisler, Finance Committee. Commissioner Snyder first.
Mr. Chair, I recommend, I recommend the approval, or the Administration and Operations Committee recommends the approval of 100-12-23.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee also recommends adoption of agenda item 100-12-23.
Are there any questions? Discussion? Any, okay, seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor?
We do roll call for these.
Okay, roll call, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Commissioner Bone is absent, Commissioner Twiliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Glazer.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Agenda item number two.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2024 Pinecrest Infirmary Millage Renewal and Increase Proposal and the Attached Ballot Language. The proposed millage language has been approved by civil council, and we recommend it be placed on either the August or November 2024 ballot or both. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, Chairperson; Eric Dorian, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of agenda item 36-4-24.
Okay. Any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none? All those, or let's see, Ann, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Twiliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Glazer.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. Committee report number three, dated May 1st, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2024 Road Millage Renewal Proposal and the Attached Ballot Language. The proposed millage language has been approved by civil council, and we recommend that it be placed on either the August or November 2024 ballot or both. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, Chairperson; Eric Dorian, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of agenda item 13-4-24.
It's 41-4-24, Commissioner. We're good. Might be a typo.
So we have a motion. Are there any questions? Pardon?
Roll call.
Yeah, but are there any questions? Discussion? Seeing none. Ann, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Twiliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone is absent, Chairman Glazer.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, agenda item number four.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2024 911 Central Dispatch Millage Renewal Proposal and the Attached Ballot Language. The proposed millage language has been approved by civil council, and we recommend it be placed on either the August or November 2024 ballot or both. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, Chairperson; Eric Dorian, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of agenda item 42-4-24.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, seeing none, Ann, would you call roll, please?
Mr. Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
One Bone is absent, Twiliger?
Yes.
Chairman Glazer.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Agenda item number five.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the proposed operating budget for Midland County Central Dispatch Authority. We recommend acceptance of the proposed budget and further recommend the approval of the request to levy .7 mills for the purpose of funding central dispatch operations for 2025, including maintenance of the countywide public safety radio system. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, Chairperson; Eric Dorian, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of agenda item 43-4-24.
Yes, sir. Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, Ann, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Dorian. Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Twiliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Glazer.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Right. Agenda item number six.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2024 State Tax Commission Report of County Equalized Value Form L-4024. This report is in accordance with MCL 209.5 and 211.34, and should be submitted to the state prior to May 6, 2024. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, Chairperson; Eric Dorian, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of agenda item 44-4-24.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussions, seeing none, hearing none, Ann, would you call roll, please?
Fisher Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Twiliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Glazer.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
All right, agenda item number seven.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the request to approve the Drain Commissioner's Plan to issue bonds in the amount of $1,660,000 to finance a drainage project on the Viscar Drain. We recommend the approval of the request from the Drain Commissioner that the Board of Commissioners pledge the full faith and credit of the County of Midland to back this project. Respectfully submitted, Steve Glazer, Chairperson; Eric Dorian, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of agenda item 46-4-24.
Thank you. Any questions?
We need a second, please.
We do need a second, yes, thank you.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second.
Support.
Any questions? Do you have questions?
No.
Explanation, all right. Seeing none, Ann, would you call roll, please?
Fisher Snyder.
Yes.
Twiliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Glazer.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Agenda item number eight.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Human Services Committee, recommend approval of the request to make a permanent appointment of the Chief Assistant Prosecutor and an APA II position that were authorized by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on April 19, 2022. We recommend authorizing the appointment of Ateia Dusso Curtis as the Chief Assistant Prosecutor and Courtney Driscoll as an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney II. Respectfully submitted, Gates, Twiliger, Chairperson; Jeanette Snyder, Elena Smith, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Twiliger.
Mr. Chairman, Human Services Committee recommends approval of agenda item 45-4-24.
Okay, no second is required? Any questions for discussion or for the comments? Seeing none, hearing none, Ann, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Twiliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Glazer.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, at this time, we have no requests, petitions, or communications. We have no old business. We do have one item of new business.
Need a motion and a second for that, please.
So can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to take up an item of new business.
Support.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Yeah, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Would you read the item number one of new business?
Yep.
Dated May 1st, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen, I recommend approval of the attached proclamation declaring the week of May 5 through 11, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week in Midland County. The President and Congress have designated the first full week of May as a time to show appreciation to our nation's talented and dedicated public servants. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, District Number 1, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I recommend agenda item 47-4-24 of the proclamation.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions or discussion?
I second.
Okay, I don't know that we need a second.
Doesn't matter.
Yes. All right, Ann, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Twiliger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Glazer.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
All right, and at this time, we have Commissioner comments? Any comments?
Start with Commissioner Twiliger.
I love it when I get to go first. First of all, of course, to acknowledge that it is always such a pleasure when it is our meeting where we acknowledge all of our wonderful employees, and I truly mean that, and they hit it out of the ballpark again this year, as in every other year. So proud of our people, and I truly mean that. And also, it's Public Service Appreciation Week, so it's just all good. The flowers are all blooming, and we're all happy for all of our employees. Thank you very much.
Move on to Commissioner Geisler.
No comment.
Commissioner Dorian.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Twiliger's comments with regards to our very own public, our very own employee statement in the county. We're thankful to have them, thank them for their great work.
Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I'll just echo Commissioner Twiliger and Commissioner Dorian's comments. I find it really encouraging to see and hear what folks in Midland County are doing and the hard work that they're doing to support our community, and we really appreciate the work they do, not just this week, but every day.
You're here.
Commissioner Snyder.
They stole all my thunder.
I knew you were going to say that. I almost typed that, I swear I did.
No, I just, of course, echo the same comments, and we are so appreciative, and it was captured rather nicely by the three of you already, so.
Ann, Chairman Glazer.
Yes, yes, I do. I guess I would like to thank certainly the people who take the time to write the nominations, because that's where it all starts, and, well, that's not quite where it all starts. The committee that puts on the effort, puts forth the effort to organize and pull this off, so I appreciate all the work that goes into this, and certainly to those who take the time to nominate their colleagues in their various offices. That takes time to put that together as well, so thank you all. Yes, at this point.
Move on to meeting schedules?
Yes, meeting schedules, and we're going to go through.
May 14.
May 14, thank you, yes.
Start again with Commissioner Twiliger, because she loves to be first.
But, but pretty much just bore comments, I really don't care about anything else, Ann. Anyway, to get specific, so, my meeting schedule, my first meeting is May night, this Thursday, Pinecrest and Department of Health and Human Service meeting, which is over right next door, and in addition to that, I'm going to be going over to the courthouse and subbing for a meeting with Ann, so I think I will go there first and then come over to Pinecrest, and that's, that's the retirement.
Yes, Midland County employees retirement.
And it's mandatory, they have to have, you know, a certain amount of personnel present. In addition to that, I, on May 10, this Friday, I'm hoping to attend the Region 7 Annual Meeting, which will be in Essexville, and I'd like, I like to attend that annually just to hear about their budget, their current budget, that how they've utilized their funding throughout the year, and what the projections are for the next year, and they, they do have a lot of moving parts within that organization, and I mean a lot. So I, I really would hope to go over and attend that as representative for Midland County. How many are other counties are in on Region 7? I don't know, like 12 or 13 or something like this. It's a significant amount. Additionally, on May 13, attending Ingrisaw Mountain Hill Township meetings, and on May 14, Human Service, and on May 16, Recovery Court over Judge Beal's courtroom. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Geisler.
I'll be attending Thursday, May 9, at noon, Act 345. All I got.
Commissioner Dorian.
As always, I continue to have a full slate of rehabilitation appointments over at Mary Freebed in Saginaw.
You're making delightful progress. We're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Great to be here.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. This isn't particular to me, but I encourage everybody to participate today. If you live in the city of Midland or in a couple of the parts of the townships, it is Election Day for the school operating millage, so I encourage everyone to, who is able to vote for that, to do so.
Thanks for sharing that, didn't know that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And then on Monday, the 13th, I have City Council, and then on Monday, the 20th, I have Northern Michigan Counties Association meeting up in Ross Common, and then City Council again that night.
Okay, so on Wednesday, the 8th, I have Jerome Township at 7:00 PM. On the 9th, there is Road Commission at 9:00 AM, but I am going to forego that and go to the Employees Retirement Board meeting, so we have a forum at 10 at the courthouse. The 13th, we have a fireman up in Edenville Township that is going to retire after 37 years of service, Jim Vanderbusch, so I'm going to go up there for a celebration, and then right after that, the Village of Sanford at 7:00 PM. On the 14th, we have A&amp;O at 2:30, right here, and then I have Edenville Township at 5:30, Geneva Township at 7:00, I will go to one of those, probably not both. And then on the 20th, is Warren Township at 6:30. And that is all.
Visi's schedule.
And I wanted to say the vote today, so in my area, I have the Meridian and Coleman, so I don't always know about the MPS, and then Geis area has Bullet Creek, so we do our Out County, and we appreciate you letting us know about the city, what goes on.
And for me, tomorrow evening, I have Porter Township at 6:00, Jasper Township at 6:30, so usually do it two for there. My wife and I will be leaving for Georgia for our granddaughter Sydney's confirmation, so we'll be gone for a week. And then I will be back for our Board of Commissioner meeting on the 21st, so I'll be making arrangements for subs for the various boards and commissions here. That's all I have to report.
Bridget has a comment.
Oh, and Bridget, yes. And I will not be here on the 14th. Yeah, we'll be gone that week, I'm sorry. All right. At that time.
It's a have a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I have a motion to adjourn.
Support. Support.
Yes, all in favor, say aye. Yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose, say nay. All right. So we are, let's see, adjourn. We are adjourned at 10:09. We're adjourned until Tuesday, May 14, at 9:00 AM to meet in an executive session of the Board of Commissioners and for the committees to resume their duties. Go in peace and... I have a whole group.